Question of the Forest Grove City Council. The topic is on council compensation. A friendly reminder that no public comment will be taken and the council will take no formal action tonight. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Assistant City Manager, Mr. Paul Downey.
Okay, we can get the presentation back up. I'm only going to hit a couple of slides. I'm not going to go through the whole thing. And Dave Anderson, he's got a few more. He's got a couple of comments he wants to make after I'm done. So he wants to come up to the middle so he's ready. We'll be ready for that. So.
Paul, I'm not seeing you or the city council. Just an FYI.
Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Can you see the presentation?
Yep.
Okay, we'll get the camera turned on, I think.
Okay, fine.
Thank you.
Just wanted to know.
Okay, we had a work session on June 24th. This is a follow-up. The purpose of the night's work session is to discuss further the recommendations and receive any direction from the council on what changes, if any, the council is willing to consider. Next slide, please. Not going to go over this slide. This is the current compensation beginning. We covered it at the last work session. Next slide, please. The committee, you, the budget, citizens members of the budget committee have two meetings and their consensus about the current compensation, which emerged over those two meetings was it's not enough transparency with the current compensation as residents do not know how the compensation is structured. Current system is weighted too heavily on insurance, which focuses primarily on retired or self-employed persons. Total value of the compensation of each counselor is not necessarily proportional to the duties and responsibilities of the position, as there could be approximately a $24,000 difference in individual counselor compensation based on the chosen levels of health insurance. So they met and they made these recommendations. You saw these recommendations for last time. And so we're gonna, we assume you've read them for this time. So go to the next slide. And the next slide is the other compensation items, which the committee is recommending remain unchanged regarding the devices and internet access. And the reason for the proposed changes, they realize this is a significant shift in how elected officials are compensated, but the proposed compensation structure would be more transparent to residents. Committee felt this compensation structure would be more equitable as all counselors be compensated at the same level, except for the council president who would get slightly more under their recommendation. Would provide health insurance for the elected official with the option of paying for other qualified family members. This would address the main inequity in the compensation structure identified by the committee members. And next slide, the monthly stipend could encourage persons who might not otherwise be able to afford to be on council or run for the office, thereby potentially broadening the pool of candidates who might run. This is a key point for the committee members as it could help, help increase the diversity of the candidate pool and help address the city's DEI goals. And also the proposed compensation structure does not increase cost to the city. And so I've turned over to Dave if he has anything to add before we take questions.
Thanks. If you could just put up the last of my three foils, that would be helpful. I would be very brief because primarily I and others who are here, I'm sure would like to understand better how the council feels about these recommendations. But I wanted to speak just briefly about our rationale and some of it will be a restatement. But let's go ahead and go to the third foil here if we could. Yeah, so the, these are the driving points for us. Transparency was the first thing we really felt was important, that any citizen could walk into the city offices and ask how much compensation is going to city council and they'd get a clear, unambiguous answer that didn't depend on how much healthcare that someone was electing to take. Equity is another very important part for us because we felt that the compensation level should track the level of responsibility and the demands of the job. Clearly, the mayor has the highest demand. We know that the council president sometimes has to step in when the mayor's not there, but anybody who's, has to be on call for their work is generally given some extra consideration for their being willingness to do, their willingness to do that. Inclusion, this is another very important point for us. We feel that these revised compensation package will enable a broader spectrum of people to feel like they could apply and serve on the council than would otherwise be the case, which is a very important thing for us. And finally, stewardship. This proposal resulted in an overall reduction of what the taxpayers will be spending. And we think that's obviously a good thing, as long as we can still accomplish what we need to do. And we believe that these proposals do that. So I'll end my comments there. Happy to take any questions you might have about what the committee thought. We have other committee members here. Tom is with me, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for, to the whole budget committee that worked on this and spent like six additional hours of your time figuring this out for us and giving these recommendations. Okay, I'm going to open it up to discussion. Any counselors wanting to start? Counselor Gustafson.
I just, I had a clarifying question. I, I think since the last meeting, it's gotten a little bit foggy in my brain about the, the insurance compensation versus the dollar amount compensation is, does this new path still provide insurance? Should counselors want the insurance?
It provides it to the elected official with the subsidization of 95% as is currently the case. But if the elected official wishes to cover other members of the household, they have to purchase that separately through the city.
And how is that different than what it is currently?
Currently, a counselor can apply the 95% subsidization to everybody in their household if they wish.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ewing.
Thank you. So these are some of my concerns and I would really like to have a deeper discussion on this as we go forward. First of all, I always have to do this and that is to justify my knowledge. So I will tell you, I'm a nationally accredited master fundraiser. And in order to qualify for that academy, I had to serve as a volunteer manager and many other disciplines in order to get my certification. I believe there were 292 nationally when I got my accreditation. So I do have a real familiarity, seven years as a volunteer manager with over 300 volunteers and intern programs. Having said that, I would like to discuss the Federal Volunteer Act of 1997. I want to make sure that we're looking into that clearly because the Federal Volunteer Act provides protection, legal protection for all of us who are considered volunteers. So we need to have a discussion about whether or not we as council members who are volunteers will still have the same protection under the law. Also, I would like to mention that under the fair labor standards practice, this is going to increase the amount of time staff legally will be required to deal with this new compensation package. First of all, if we are paid volunteers, then we do not really have the right to, as proclaimed, go forward and file a case against discrimination, minimum wage, those types of things. We relinquish that. Also, I'd like to talk about the downsides. Paying one volunteer, which we are currently, over other volunteers will provide an equity issue as well as legal issues because it will require the staff to set up two separate systems. One whole system for the volunteer who is now being paid and one whole system for the volunteer who isn't, as well as one whole system for the employees. So now you have three reckonings that the staff will have to pay attention to going forward. That's one big issue. So there are a lot of these questions and a lot of information. What I would like to do, rather than take more time, I would like to submit a letter to the council as a whole and staff outlining my concerns and the legal issues that need to be considered before we make such a monumental change in our philosophy. And let's get it right. This is a philosophical discussion. It should have been brought up earlier in the year. It should have been brought up at the retreat and it certainly should have been brought up before the last budget meeting of the session. So I hope you'll consider that I am going to put those things into writing and I am going to submit them to the city manager for distribution so I'm not violating public meeting law. And I don't find this to be transparent because this type of decision, this type of philosophical change needs to go before our voters. We may be surprised that they follow another path and decide, yeah, this is important for us to continue and have leadership and have more diversity. But it's their choice, not ours. So yes, I have a philosophical difference in how this has been approached, but I also have a philosophical difference in what constitutes a volunteer that we all knew we were when we ran for election and what constitutes the legality of a paid volunteer. Because there's a lot of weeds there we're not talking about. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Does staff want to respond to any of Counselor Ewing's concerns?
The stipend and the health insurance are already offered to the council, so we already have those systems set up. And what's being proposed is just a change in the levels of compensation for both the stipend and for the health insurance. So as far as staff, taking any more staff's time, that wouldn't, it wouldn't not take any more staff's time if the proposal is recommended went through.
I don't agree with you, Paul.
Counselor Ewing, we're going to let, we'll have a short work session. We need to make sure everyone gets a chance to speak. Thanks. Okay, so a couple of things I want to bring up. In the, you know, through my time doing this position as a counselor and as mayor, a lot of work's been done around DEI and volunteering and like trying to increase accessibility and community engagement, which are two of our values. And, you know, ODOT, TRIMET, what a lot of people are saying is a stipend. And, you know, and I want to bring this up too, because I think there were some, I was trying to like rehash our discussion from the last meeting and I think there was, like, I think the first level of conversation is a stipend isn't what you submit receipts for as a cost of doing the job. A stipend is supposed to help you be able to serve and do the job. And so in what people who have done equity work for trying to increase engagement in DEI have found that a stipend is the most equitable approach because if people need childcare in order to make a meeting, they can use that money from their stipend to pay for their childcare. If they're driving their car a lot, if they need to take unpaid days, the stipend does those things. A stipend's not to pay for my plane ticket to go to DC and, you know, lobby for federal funding. Like that's being reimbursed for the cost to the city. So I actually think that the group, you know, I'm going to disagree. I think that I'm willing to bring this as a resolution and add a public hearing. I heard the, the thought that we need the public's input. So even though typically a resolution doesn't have a public hearing, I think one approach is to bring it to council in a public meeting, use our communication channels, invite the public to testify and give their thoughts on it. Because for me, I am willing to decrease. This is a decrease in salary. It's a decrease in only one type of incentive to run on council. I'm willing to decrease that in hopes of doing the DEI work and the community engagement work and making it easier for more people to run. We just went through the charter review committee. That charter review committee spent a year and a half and what they said was, we can't do term limits. We can't do districts because we don't have the level of engagement. And right now, I don't want to see our pool get shallow. The deeper and the more accessible you have, the wider you open it up to people, the better policy, the richer discussion. And that, so that's why I'm in support of this. I'm in support. This is a work session. This isn't a final discussion. This is like, hey, can we bring this to a public meeting? Ask for a public hearing and then we can all vote on it. And that would be my, my wish is I think we should do this. I think the committee spent six hours. I think we have a diverse group. It was actually brought up at the first budget meeting. I don't know if you were in attendance, but that, it was brought up, like we've been doing this process. So there's no sneaking around, trying to hide. And we are actually, this is not an increase, this is a decrease in our compensation. Counselor Gustafson.
Counselor Ewing, I, I'm eager to read what you're going to write and, and send out because I don't understand a lot of what you're saying. I know there's a lot of details there that I don't have knowledge of, so I, I do appreciate that and I think that will be helpful for me to understand your, where you're coming from. So thank you. A couple of things, I've had some time to think since the last meeting. And one is, I, I hear the word salary, compensation and stipend and volunteer. And I've never understood why you're a paid volunteer. If you're paid, you're not a volunteer, you're getting paid. So I'm, I'm assuming, Counselor Ewing, that some of what you might be writing might explain some of those terms. Okay, so that will be helpful, but there was conversation about transparency on what elected officials are spending their compensation on. If it's my compensation, that I don't think that's public, right? So that's none of anybody's business. I'm doing the work, I'm getting the pay, just like anybody else. So that was just another thought. But then I really sat with myself and I remembered hearing of other organizations voting for their own raises and realized how much of a hypocrite I was because I was going to vote to move forward with this. So I'm asking everybody else to sit and think about whatever we do, whatever we decide how we want to move forward, that we do bring it to the people for a vote. I, I really think that even though we're small and we do things a little bit differently here, I think it is ethically important to have our compensation go, go through a vote through the people. That's it.
Counselor Martinez.
I agree with Counselor Gustafson. I also feel that to be even more transparent needs to be brought to the community and voted on through them and not made, and that we not make a decision on that ourselves. Because I don't, I'm, I'm agree, in agreement, I don't like to see where other community electors vote in their own raises.
Counsel, Council President Rippey.
Thank you. I, I agree with the, the point about taking it to the voters. This is significant enough of a change that, in every, in every aspect that I ever, ever heard, the, the people have always been upset that elected officials vote for their own pay raises without going to the people who are actually paying those compensations, whether it's a stipend or a salary. I also think that even though, and I appreciate, I really do appreciate the work that the subcommittee did. They, they, they looked at it and they studied it and they made a recommendation. It's all well and good, but they admitted themselves that they did not look at a, an expense-based reimbursement-based type of, of compensation. And I'm not so sure that that isn't viable or transparent or equitable. So without knowing what that kind of a system could provide us, I think we're, we're looking at just half the cookie. And I would rather have more information with respect to that kind of a system as well. Thank you.
I think I'm struggling because I'm just going to be very blunt. I'm frustrated because we already get compensated. We never went to the people, this council before us never went and said, hey, is this okay? We have all benefited from this one type of compensation. So now we have an opportunity to say, is this compensation that we currently have, is it equitable? Does it help everybody access this position? And we're going to sit here and hide behind smoke and mirrors and say, oh, we should take it to the people. Well, we're going to, so we're going to take it to the people and say, hey, we want it decreased. We want to decrease our, our compensation. Because that's what this proposal says. It's like, hey, the council's going to decrease it in hopes of creating a more inclusive, accessible way to serve your community. Like, I don't feel like, if this was a huge increase in pay, I could get behind this, like, let's take it to the voters. But for this, I think a public hearing, having people testify, reaching out to your channels and like engaging with the community, getting a pulse and then the members deciding if they, how they want to vote or whatever, then, but like right now, this is being, we're not even getting to the public policy process. We're not even getting to a point where we're going to say, hey, community members, we're thinking about doing this, please come testify. We're not even letting, because you can all still vote if this comes to a resolution, comes to a council meeting, you would vote on the resolution. But you're like not even allowing the public policy part of it. And I think that's what I'm really frustrated about is like, as, we have a responsibility in this position and I think that this, I don't even, I, I don't want to even assume why we're not allowing it to carry out through the public policy process. Counselor Gustafson.
I don't understand the smoke and mirrors comment just because it's, it's, I just said that I was being a hypocrite, all right? I said it on public television when I was thinking about moving this forward. That is the complete opposite of smoke and mirrors. I want the public to be able to decide what I make by being up here, making these decisions. And just because we already have a compensation that we didn't have go to the voters does not mean that was correct and ethical. So I think moving forward, we need to think about that and move forward ethically.
Council President Rippey.
Thank you. I, I take exception to the smoke and mirrors comment. You're basically implying that we don't care, that we're not interested in the facts, that we're not interested in other options. I take great offense at that, Mayor. And, and I, I don't find that as an acceptable behavior. Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Valenzuela.
I would like.
I would like to say something. Counselor Valenzuela is next, Counselor Ewing.
I know. I just want to make sure that we hear from Michael and Madam Donna.
Point of order.
Yes, I think, Mayor, you were not understood when you said the words, smoke and mirror is, the way I, I understood it is that you're talking about this process. This process that everyone, most, you know, of the counselors here want to make this path transparent, but it's how we are seeing things. It's not, she did not mean to say what everyone here understood by that. So I just want to, want to make that clear because I completely understood what you said and it had nothing to do with that, but it's just, you know, our minds and the process that we're, we're trying to go through or not go through. In terms of the compensation, I, I do understand where many of you are coming from, that it should be taken to the people and, and all that. I do understand that, but you also need to understand the equity, you know? And since I came here to this council, I have seen an issue with our DEI. You know, we put it on paper, it looks beautiful and everything, but we need to walk the talk, you know? And if we want to recruit people to serve in this council, sometimes they might have challenges that none of us have. And, you know, to make their path this, an opportunity that is actually, you know, possible for them to be part of this council. I think we need to think about that, those implications for the future, who's going to be sitting here in the future.
Counselor Ewing.
If we're going to, you know, really be honest about this and you want DEI and you want equity, then we need to take it out of the volunteer terminology and be able to pay a living wage for those who are serving. I think that we pretend that we believe in that, but the reality is this, that working folk, I have been poor, 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 and working folk for the stipend that we're talking about, the wage that we're talking about, that is their monthly wage. So to not take it before the voters, to me, will not only cause deeper transparency issues, but it's going to cause an outlaw. I would like to hear from Michael, please.
He doesn't have his hand raised. So I think the moving forward is, do we want a resolution? I mean, so what, where are we at as a council moving forward? I mean, what are our options from city staff? Can we, it's too, it's too late at this point to put it on the ballot for November, correct? What are some of our options? Please.
If you want to, I believe the filing deadline to put something on the November ballot is August 16th. So the council would have to take some kind of formal action to refer something to the ballot prior to that date. The other option, as you mentioned, was a resolution and holding a public hearing commensurate with that resolution. So those are principally the two options, I think.
A question with taking it to the ballot, would the first question for the voters to vote on is if counselors should get compensated? I mean, because like, right, that's an assumption, but I'm just trying to walk this back. Like, we don't really even know if the voters think we should get the health insurance and the 300 or 150 dollars a month. So do we ask, is the first question, do we ask, should the Forest Grove City Council receive any sort of compensation? Counsel, Counselor Gustafson.
I think that we are looking at this in a different angle now and so we, we need to have a couple more work sessions, figure it out.
I would like to see it as a resolution at the next meeting and it's like start there and let the community come and then have a vote. And if it, if that doesn't work, if we can't count, like, or whatever, whatever happens is decided, then we can take next steps. But I, I really think that if you look at the other municipalities, a lot of different things, the reason most of them do a stipend, like we're one, like, oh, well, we have this health insurance, but that's really only an incentive for people who need health insurance. I don't know, I just think that I would, I would love to have an opportunity and I'm not, to hear from the public on this during the summer to like tell us if we're on point or not on point. Like, I do value that. Counselor Gustafson.
So this is a work session, so we can't make motions?
Right.
Okay. I, I'm not changing my stance. I think that they should go to the voters.
And when is, although general session, we can't, or general election, we can't put this forth to the voters, what's the, when is the next?
May is the next election.
Of 2025, if you put it on earlier, you might have to pay the county for that, to pay the county to do, do the, do a ballot measure if it was on the March election. The May election, they typically don't charge.
Correct.
So there's one counselor that's in favor of putting a resolution on for the next, for the August meeting? And there's one that's not.
Who's in favor of the resolution with the next meeting?
Okay.
I'm not interested in doing it other than putting it before the voters.
So are you throwing out a third option of putting a resolution to put it on the ballot?
I'm simply saying that the insurance wasn't put before the voters and therefore I will not back going forward without that being the end result. So I'm not really interested, I'm interested in hearing what the people have to say. I'm not willing to change my stance.
I, I have to say too, I'm not retired or in business for myself. I like the insurance because it's better than what I get at my job. And I'm in agreement with going through And I'm in agreement with going through and doing more work sessions and gathering more information.
So two for the resolution, two for not.
I am not in favor of a resolution right now. I think we need more time and more input uh, to decide, uh, what's a reasonable approach to take on this.
Counsel Marshall.
I'm in agreeance with, uh, Counsel Rippey.
Okay, I'm going to adjourn this work session at 7:12. Not attending this work session, Marianne, do you know? Oh, he's on. Okay, there he is.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to call to order this work session of the Forest Grove City Council. The topic is on our urban renewal plan. Just a friendly reminder that work sessions, there will be no public comment taken and the board will take no formal action. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to city staff.
Thank you. I always forget your title when we're at the URA, but thank you, Mayor. Uh, Brian Polk, the Development Director, uh, here with Miles Lawaki, acting out of development coordinator. Uh, before you on the urban renewal plan, it's sort of a kind of refresher and, uh, next steps of where we're going with the urban renewal plan. Tonight, we're going to briefly recap why urban renewal exists and how it works. And then, uh, briefly recap the existing urban renewal agency programs. Familiarize the board with additional specifics in the renewal plan about the property acquisition program. And discuss potential issuance of debt to fund the program. And just to kind of help you just conceptualize tax, tax increment financing, which is what urban renewal is. Uh, it's really a debt, debt management tool, um, to, to get improvements done and, uh, have the funds to pay for them easily over, uh, successive years. To give you a sense, the URA was established in 2014 with a maximum indebtedness of 15 million. Uh, about 2 million of that was taken out of the Jesse Quinn building, leaving about 13 million maximum indebtedness remaining. It expires in 2034, uh, by the planned date. However, state law has changed and it's not so much by the planned date now as it is, when you hit your maximum indebtedness is when the renewal ends. Uh, there are 525 tax lots in our urban renewal area and you can see the area right there in the blue. About 200 acres overall. And right now, the tax increment revenues of, are approximately $750,000 per year. Why we do urban renewal, um, the URA seeks to increase taxable value of property in their renewal area, further eliminate blight and blighting influences, improve the utilization of land within the URA uh, to catalyze private investment and job creation by offering financial incentives that meet community objectives, reduces risk and encourage private investment. Upon expiration of the agency, return more revenue to the taxing districts than without the investment. Next slide, please. Do, in order to have an urban renewal agency in the state of Oregon, you have to also have a plan uh, that outlines a framework for how debt is to be issued, what projects the URA wants to take on and how to spend that tax increment revenue. We have been implementing programs in the plan and you have been actively participating in that. Uh, tonight, we will recap those programs that are already in place and then seek to clarify their implementation. Next slide. As a reminder, these are the current URA programs. We have the storefront facade improvement program that's funded at $20,000 a year, one-to-one match, 10,000 maximum. The building improvements program, which you just recently approved, um, that's a one-to-one match, um, funded at $300,000 per year. 5,000 for design assistance that doesn't require a match and then, uh, a hundred thousand dollars maximum per project, uh, that does require a one-to-one match. And then you've also talked about doing the land baking and decided that we would fund that at $300,000 per year. Match what is applied in the case. Next, next slide. And so the plan outlines the, the follow man, following amounts for the programs we're kind of talking about uh, today especially, um, their framework, you can, you can always change your amounts. The board has the discretion to, uh, actually amend the plan, change amounts, change programs, change all those sorts of things. There are major and minor amendments that we won't really kind of get into much today, um, but just know that you have the authority to amend that plan. In the plan, the building improvements program is a $2 million program. That's sort of, you know, one of those things that the plan envisioned taking on debt to fund that program. So, uh, you could either have $2 million upfront and just sort of divvy it up or not. And then the property acquisitions is at $3 million. And I want to just kind of remind you, these were $2014. And if anybody bought a house recently between 2014 and 2024, those prices have changed quite a bit. And so that number is, is a bit antiquated, uh, put it that way. Next slide. Uh, you all approved the building improvements program in, on June 24th of 2024. Good news, we are live on the city's website, uh, where you can now, uh, go apply. And, uh, you can also be, translate this thing into multiple languages. We're being, we're taking applications for design grants up to 5,000 with, with no match. And then, as I mentioned before, the building improvement grants up to 100,000 with a one-to-one match. Moving to property acquisitions, um, we, we've had this conversation before, right? We, we've talked about it. I think we all had a very strong direction that you emphasize the importance of property acquisition and land banking and redevelopment. Uh, the priorities so far have included the downtown redevelopment of the Jesse Quinn, more recently the downtown grocery store and boutique hotel. The URA plan recognizes the long-term benefits of property acquisition financed through the issue, issue, that issuance of debt. I'd remind you that these acquisitions per the plan must be from willing sellers. Uh, we are not going to use limited domain or anything like that. This is, this is very much, uh, we have to have willing sellers, properties that are on the market, or, uh, we can negotiate with a property owner who willing to sell us their property. They also must be within their renewal area. So inside that blue area on the map that you saw are. Plan identifies 13 properties. Potential acquisition. We'll show you those properties that are in the plan, uh, in the, in the next slides. And as well as a potential process moving forward, um, if the board would like to discuss purchasing property, we need to hold an executive session. We can't talk about specific properties in tech. So please kind of just, if you have questions about specific property, please kind of just hold them and just talk offline or wait till the next executive session. We need to not talk about specifics, but just sort of these are general, what's in the plan. These are the properties that you would see in the plan. There's a map of the, of the properties in the plan. We did leave two of these off. Um, these were two properties that have recently sold and been developed with new development. Uh, that was the Hagan site and the Albertson site, I believe. But, uh, those, those have obviously had brand new developments that are not going. So it's not worth the discussion of talking about those two properties. But there are, uh, several properties on here, 11 remaining that were on that list. That are in various states of for sale or interest in selling. I will just kind of point out that you see several properties on here that are kind of outlined in red. Those are properties that the city already owns. Now I want to clarify that sort of distinction between city-owned property and URA-owned property. If the city owns a property, the URA would have to buy it from the city. Luckily, you know if you're willing to sell. Next slide. Um, this is, this is one right out here, the gravel lot, um, that many people park in and everything. That is, uh, point three six, point three six acres. Zone town center transition currently uses parking. The main and 21st parking lot, um, zone institutional uses surface parking right now. Thank you all if I recognize this lot pretty easily. Uh, this lot on Main and 19th. Also institutional zones, uh, or zone institutional uses surface parking, point two one acres owned by the city. Uh, this parking lot as well on 1917 19th Avenue, surface parking, point one one acres. Uh, Times Lethal Site was in there. We include this because Site B is part of that as well. Town center transition, uh, and as well as a vacant right now, obviously you have some, uh, activity right now that you've already kind of authorized. This is the Woodfold Site across the street from here. The zone town center transition, 2.04 acres. Uh, currently uses warehouse and an under, underutilized land. This is the site of the gas station. Zone town center support, um, also, uh, has been sort of redeveloped lately, you know, that I don't know as far as, uh, what level of investments in that building or not. It's currently being used as a food bank. Obviously, I think you know that. Next slide. This Kane Petroleum Site, um, zone community commercial. We won't discuss any specifics tonight, but, um, that is on the list. Papio Site is on the list. Wells Fargo Parking Lot. And the Schlegel Property is west of this here. So the question right now is whether the URA would like to consider issuing debt to fund these programs. The remaining maximum indebtedness is about 13 million. Uh, one of the things you have to consider as you move forward though, is you know, the, the amount of increment that's coming in right now and, and the amount, the ability to service that debt, uh, as you move forward. Plan calls for, allows three rounds of debt issuance. We've had the first one. That was with the Jesse Quinn site. The, the second was to, uh, come with, um, get exactly when it is, but we're kind of in that window right now. And just to remind you, the, the, the issuance of debt to do these programs is, is why the program exists. Um, that's, that's really, uh, the, the tool that you have at your fingertips. It's a powerful tool. And just to kind of, you know, give you an idea of why it's like that, you know, I mean, these downtown properties tend to just be harder to make projects pencil, you know, modern building codes, uh, reuse of properties, running into things like underground storage tanks or, you know, and things like that. It's just inherently a harder place to develop. And so the URA can step in sometimes to kind of help fill that sort of gap in financing to make projects pencil and to help revitalize your city. So the discussion points tonight are, you know, whether or not the URA board, you all, uh, want to consider rising, consider utilizing debt to finance building improvement and property acquisition and/or property, property acquisition. And if so, how that might be structured. Do you have a consensus to allow staff to move forward and, uh, and investigate opportunities sites identified in the plan? And provide a report to the board on current potential of these sites. And pending this analysis, uh, we can recommend potential amount, timing and type of debt issuance. And, uh, next slide.
Okay, so let's go through, well, first, let's go to questions first and then we'll go bullet point by bullet point. Okay, so Counselor Martinez.
So one question I has is, it has is the gravel lot over here. It, we've already said it's for campers. So do we have to assign a new area then if we use that for something?
That, that seems like you would have to. Well, I don't.
So with, with, in their change in the time, place, manner, or that's what?
Not in our, not in our ordinance. The Supreme Court had, had a ruling on it. But in terms of what our resolution or ordinance, sorry, it's not a resolution. What our ordinance said with time, place and manner, like at this point, there hasn't been a change. Like that was passed and voted. So if we wanted to continue, we, I mean, that would be something we would discuss. So yes. The short answer is yes. Without getting into the weeds. Okay. It was like, without getting into the. Okay, further questions of staff?
Um, on the property, the, where is the, uh, the former, former service station? Is there anything with DQ that has to be?
We can't specifically talk about.
I don't know if there was any DQ, like if there's.
You can't, we can't discuss about anything in specifics with the property.
We're trying to avoid individual property discussion, just kind of keep this on, on the high level for, might you want to do stuff for debt? If you want to discuss individual properties, there's going to be quite a bit of analysis will be needed on some of them. And we would come back to you in executive session to discuss property, any potential property acquisitions.
And this is, this is an opportunity where we can ask, um, staff to look into other properties that aren't necessarily listed. So we could ask staff to look at the US Bank Building as an option.
We could say, staff, could you look at other properties?
Other properties.
Very much so. Happy to.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Counselor Gustafson.
Um, is there a, um, concern with your first bullet here, uh, regarding financing? Um, interest rates are really great right now. So, and, and I don't, you know, I can't foresee the future or, you know, maybe there's some clues that tell us that it's going to drop in a year or whatever, but is that something we need to consider before moving forward?
It absolutely will be. I mean, I, you're a hundred percent right. I think we're all thinking that too. I mean, uh, you know, it's, it's something that I think everybody kind of knows is happening right now. I think when, when Paul comes back and does that sort of analysis to see what kind of debt we can service, it will include a certain assumed interest rate.
What we'll do with the council, I mean, of the boards, if the board's open to issuing debt for property or building programs or other phases of the URA program, what we would do is we would say, okay, here's our estimated cash, cash flow up to 2034. I mean, we should get so much now and we anticipate property tax increases of this, so of this time up to 2034 and expense increases of this. So here's potential debt service money we might have. Then we'll go out to our financial advisor and say, based on current interest rate conditions, market, if we're going to issue debt out to the, to be repaid by this point in time, how much debt can we issue now, given the interest rates and every, and all the other situations? That would be a piece of the analysis we'd come back to the board with.
Thanks. Counsel President Rippey.
Uh, thank you. Um, so as, as Brian already pointed out, debt financing is, is the tool that URAs use. And so I think we should in fact consider moving forward with more debt financing. We have the opportunity. We have the, 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 the limits are there. And what, uh, staff is proposing here is to be more proactive about, uh, and re-energizing our community along economic development, which is what we've been looking forward all along. And so I see no reason why we, they, they shouldn't move forward on each and every one of these bullets here. And, uh, then, I mean, all we're doing is, is pointing them in the direction or giving them permission to go in the direction that they're all already wanting to go. And then they'll bring the details to us. So I'd recommend that we go ahead and have a consensus on all of those.
Okay, great. Counsel, Counselor Gustafson, let's just go down the line.
Yep.
Yep, for all three?
Yep.
Okay, Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counsel Marshall?
Yeah.
Counsel Valenzuela?
Counsel Ewing?
Yes.
Okay, so it looks like there's consensus.
You guys rock. Thank you.
Okay, and I'm going to adjourn this work session. Thanks. Counsel Ewing? I don't see Counsel Ewing online. Oh, she's just, has her camera off maybe?
But there's not even a little square.
Okay, I'm just going to start it. I'm going to call the Forest Grove City Council meeting to order on July 8th at 7:18 PM. Sorry for the late starts. Will the city recorder please call roll?
Counsel President Rippey?
Here.
Counselor Gustafson?
Here.
Counselor Martinez?
Here.
Counselor Marshall?
Here.
Counselor Valenzuela?
Here.
Counselor Ewing?
Here.
Mayor Wenzel?
Here.
Forest Grove City Council meetings are located on the land of the Tuolotin Kalapuas, who call themselves the Apalati. They are now part of the Confederate tribes of Grand Ron. Will the council and the audience, please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Next up, we have our proclamations. It is Fill the Boot for MDMA on August 23rd, 2024. Whereas Forest Grove Fire and Rescue has been working with the Muscular Dystrophy Association, MDA, in their fight against neuromuscular disease. And whereas Fill the Boot is an opportunity for Oregon firefighters to ask community members to drop donations into the fire booth to help local families served by MDA, by MDA in the state. This year marks the 70th anniversary of the partnership between firefighters and MDA in the fight against muscular wasting diseases. And whereas their daily service to the community and their dedication to the Muscular Dystrophy Association, Forest Grove firefighters contribute greatly. Forest Grove firefighters contribute greatly to the well-being of residents, of all of its residents. And whereas firefighters locally and nationally are the largest contributors to MDA. Forest Grove firefighters have raised funds to help fight against 43 different types of neuro, neuromuscular diseases. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Forest Grove does hereby proclaim August 23rd, 2024 as Fill the Boot for MDMA in Forest Grove, Oregon, Washington County, and encourages all residents of Forest Grove to support the efforts of our local firefighters and the Muscular Dystrophy Association. Thank you.
I think they went on a call.
Maybe the, I know, me too. Maybe the August meeting? And then maybe I'll just.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to item B. Public comment. Time provided for anyone wishing to speak to the city council on an item not on the agenda or on the agenda, but not scheduled for a public hearing. Comments are limited to two minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. The public comment period shall not exceed 30 minutes unless a majority of councillors present vote to extend the time. Zoom attendees may use the raise hand option to be called on. Uh, first up for public comment is Ms. Kristi Kotkey. Can you please come to the front? Hello, Ms. Kotkey.
Hello, do I need, oh, I'm on. Went through a whole half a box of good and plennies and a whole bunch of scribbling out of my notes during that last conversation, counsel, but I'm happy to be here tonight. Uh, mayor and councillors, I am here tonight, not in my capacity as school board leadership, although I will share one piece of exciting news at the end about that. But I am here because of the charter review and compensation package. As we heard tonight, again, from Paul, who I actually do agree with, it's no additional work. It's something we're already doing. And as David Anderson mentioned last meeting, it's a reduction in the spending to allow for people in the future, not you, people in the future, who we want to encourage to be on council, to have a more equitable chance. That being said, I have been perplexed about a few things as I've been listening to the past meetings. One, I wondered how many people in this town of 26,000 were laying awake at night troubled by the verbiage we use in the city charter around the mayor's role? My guess is outside of this room tonight, it is zero. I bet my, that's not at Oregon Ducks. The time and the laser focus that some on this council spent on that one topic, I really wish could have been diverted to things that we actually did hear from our community and especially from our marginalized communities, mainly one. Wait, that's two. The majority of respondents on our survey indicated they would support a choice about term limits. How is this council responding to that overwhelming request for our community? The irony would be if that is the one thing that doesn't actually get considered here. There are many mentions by councillors of, quote, "community members" they hear from and talk with. 75% of this town did not vote to elect people on this council. I would love more transparency about how each councillor does engage with the community as a whole, with our marginalized communities, members, who that actually is and what systems they have in place to get that feedback and share it in a transparent way. I would also love to see council attendance in person improve. We are emphasizing to our students and families the importance of showing up in person. Modeling that at leadership levels can send a positive message that we all need. And finally, I was gobsmacked to hear after David Anderson's detailed presentation about the compensation package restructuring, which would actually allow the city to save money and allow flexibility for incoming councillors to have a chance to serve in this city. That makes it more equitable, that there would be the kind of debate we just watched tonight. Let people make that choice. Share with us the people you've talked to, not how you personally feel, but who are those people? This conversation moves the needle towards equity, even if it is a difficult conversation to have. And finally, I'm closing with an invitation. I would like to let you know that in spirit of doing things that are a little bit new and different, to see how it opens up opportunity in this community, the school board voted this month to move our meetings to Tuesday nights next year. We did that in particular, although several members would have preferred to leave it on Monday so that we could open opportunities in this community for people to attend both meetings. We have a person, Beverly, that has been coming to school board, but would leave, leave to come to council. That's an example of a school board thinking ahead about opening on opportunity with a decision they have to make. Thank you for the extended time tonight, and thank you for all of your service. And a final shout out to, of course, light and power. They are forever in my heart.
Thank you. Are there any, is there anybody on Zoom who would like to give public comment? Seeing none? We're going to move on to item C, the consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine. Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry, come up. I didn't see you. I'm sorry. I have a list. I'm sorry. Sitting is fine. Great, thank you.
So my name is Danielle Soklapis. I am our lead and senior driver for Ride Connection here in Forest Grove. I bring a couple of our writers that are here with us all the time. We actually had six more people who wanted to attend and put in a good word about us, but unfortunately it was really hot. So they opted out. We'll go ahead and go with you.
Cooler in here, so they're missing out. Um, my name is Lauren. I am a mother of three children that are 10, eight and seven years old. Um, I live in low income housing out here in Forest Grove. There's no bus stability. I'm, I'm public housing in Forest Grove. So when my car flipped three weeks ago, if it was not for the Grove Link, I would be stuck. Um, and they are not willing to move us either. So we would really be stuck. We would have no way of getting our groceries. I'd have no way of bringing my kids to the Aquatic Center. We'd have no way of doing anything at all. So I am forever grateful that this service exists. However, I do have a couple of recommendations as someone that is low income in this neighborhood. There's no school roof. So I couldn't, if it wasn't for whoever I spoke to at the Grove Link um, the day of my kids' graduation, if it wasn't for them and them pulling some strings in the office and like letting it all work out. Um, I wouldn't have been able to attend my kids' graduation at the Lee. Um, because there's no bus route out there. So, um, I think that really needs to be taken into consideration. We really do want to be a part of our kids' lives in school too. Um, and we don't have the facility to get there. So, um, that's definitely an issue, I think. Also, um, we need some better service. I got a scholarship for the Aquatic Center. Super cool. They give us a hundred dollars for each member of our family. The free swims at night are from 7:00 to 8:45. The bus stops at 7:15. We can't get to them. My kids were incredibly disappointed when we got there and realized that there was no bus home. I was recently diagnosed with fibromyalgia and, um, there's no way for me to walk home. I can't get home. Um, the drivers are amazing. They help us, um, in ways that Trimate normally doesn't. They helped us when we got on the bus to figure out where exactly we needed to get off. They also helped us to figure out how to get food boxes. They're that amazing. So the drivers are incredible. I just, I would really use a lot more service. Like I know that, um, there aren't a lot of low income people that get to talk to you guys about like what we're struggling with. And this would make our lives so much easier. Um, we can't get like late work shift or anything like that because there's no way for us to get home. So we're stuck in just like midday shift. Oh, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lauren.
Uh, I'm, I'm a long time user of this service. I'd just like to say that they not only have the service during the week, but on the weekend too. And then also on Saturdays, they, they provide a service between here and the next town down the street, which is a valuable thing to have in this area. So we need to keep the service around. Very valuable.
Thank you.
And I can actually say for myself, I'm actually a mother of eight. And, um, that's how I became aware of Ride Connection because my kids kept missing the bus and I'd have to try and figure out how they were going to get to the high school. Well, if I could get them down to, you know, Trimate and get them down to Safeway, they could get away to the high school. So they wouldn't miss. But there is a big concern with a lot of our writers about being able to get to the elementaries, um, not being able to do after school activities. We do have a limited time, even though it is a long time. There are some activities that they can't do. I know we are extending our programs. We're trying to do everything we can. We're taking and, you know, deviating off of routes for some of our people to try and help them. And it is an amazing free service for, you know, our patrons. We do really love the program. We would just love to have a lot more extended areas for everybody.
Thank you so much for coming and sharing your stories and your experiences. Any additional public comment? I don't want to miss. Thank you. Moving on to item C, the consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be adopted with a single motion without separate discussion. Councillors who wish to remove an item from the consent, consent agenda may do so prior to the motion. Any items removed will be discussed and acted upon following the approval of the remaining items. What is the wish of the council?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Consent agenda was moved by Council President Rippey and seconded in by Counselor Gustafson. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say aye. Hearing one? Wait, are, are you, is it?
I was late. Aye for four. Yeah.
Okay. The consent agenda is approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a seven to zero vote. Item D, additions or deletions. City manager, any additions or deletions?
There are no additions or deletions. Thank you, mayor.
You're welcome. Any proposed by councillors? Seeing none. Item E, presentations. The council will hold questions until the end of each presentation. A two-minute reminder will be given to the presenter to conclude remarks. We have one presentation tonight and it's from Ride Connection. Uh, so if you would come up and share some updates, that would be great. Hi.
Hi, good evening. Uh, thank you so much for having us, mayor, uh, city council. Uh, we're really happy to be here, uh, to share updates, uh, on the Ride Connection, uh, service in Forest Grove as well as, uh, Washington County's shuttle stop enhancement project. Um, next slide. So my name is Rezifah Houdi. I'm a transportation planner with Washington County, uh, leading the shuttle stop, uh, enhancement project. And with me here today is, uh, John Whitman, planning supervisor for Ride Connection. He's going to talk to you about all the exciting updates happening with, uh, Ride Connection service in Forest Grove. Next slide. So we'll first talk about, um, the, the county transit development plan. That's sort of the vehicle with which we are funding these, uh, service enhancements and, uh, stop improvements. John will also give an overview of Ride Connection, the services that they offer. Um, and then he'll get into the updates planned for the, uh, the Grove Link, the West Link and the newly minted Cornelius Link um, in Forest Grove. And then we will talk about the, uh, ongoing shuttle stop enhancements project that the county is leading. And we'll leave some time for Q and A at the end. Next slide. So, uh, the county transit development plan, this is a biennial plan that we are required to, uh, pass every two years. Um, as far as the statewide transportation improvement fund, um, this is funded through the, um, the payroll, the employee payroll tax from House Bill 2017. Um, the county is primarily responsible for the areas in green that you see on the map. Those are the rural areas outside of the Trimate service district as well as the smart service district. In addition, we help facilitate the connections into the Trimate district from, uh, for instance, Yam Hill County, Tillamook County, uh, as well. Um, and then we also threw, uh, some funding that we received from Trimate. Those go towards the community connectors that serve that first last mile, uh, connection, uh, to help connect communities, connect jobs um, in areas that don't have good bus or rail service within the Trimate district in blue. And that's where we get the funding for, uh, Grove Link and Cornelius Link. Next slide. So Ride Connection, we contract with them, um, as our public transportation service provider. They leverage, uh, they help leverage a variety of funds, including local, federal, um, state, as well as private, uh, resources to help pay for these, uh, the transit they provide. Um, they also take the lead on our community partnerships and engagement with, uh, community-based organizations like Central Cultural and other, um, partners as well. Slide. So now I'll have John, uh, go through the Ride Connection, uh, services with you.
Thank you, Rezil. And thank you, council, for having us this evening. Uh, again, my name is John Whitman. I'm the service planning supervisor, uh, with Ride Connection. Um, and I've, uh, been before Forest Grove City Council a few times, uh, to present on Grove Link and, and more of what we do in the community. I'll just give a, a brief refresher, uh, especially for, for folks who might be new to us. Uh, but we're a private nonprofit organization. We've been providing transportation options for older adults and people with disabilities since the late 1980s. And about 15 years ago, uh, we expanded into, uh, providing general public, uh, shuttle service, uh, throughout Washington County communities like Forest Grove, uh, North Hillsborough, Tuolatin and the rural area. We're best known for, uh, providing door-to-door transportation for older adults and people with these disabilities, but uh, we do a lot more to, uh, fill needed transportation gaps in the community. Next slide. Some of those other programs include, uh, our volunteer driver, uh, program. Sured vehicle partnerships with nonprofits and other groups, uh, that might need a vehicle, especially a wheelchair accessible vehicle to transport their constituents. Uh, that door-to-door service, uh, and then our ride together program, which provides mileage reimbursement, uh, to neighbors, friends, family members who are, uh, giving rides to, uh, older adults and people with disabilities. With our community connectors specifically, but our transportation options more broadly, uh, we believe they provide a number of impacts to the community. Uh, I, I think hearing, uh, from Grove Link writers this evening was really powerful and demonstrated uh, a, a few of those impacts, uh, that you might see, um, in specific cases. But overall, we, we, we believe that, um, access to public transportation enhances quality of life and community connections. Uh, increases access to jobs, healthcare, shopping and other services. Provides mobility options for residents and commuters who do not have access to a vehicle. Um, and especially older adults, people with disabilities and, uh, students or youth. In Forest Grove especially, we see a lot of, uh, Forest Grove High School students, uh, using our services. Uh, we see it as a safe transportation option during inclement weather. I think the extreme heat we're seeing today really demonstrates the need for, uh, buses, as well as bus shelters, uh, for keeping people out of the elements, um, and allowing them to go about their daily life. And finally, we see our services as providing needed connections to other regional transit services. Uh, we see ourselves as both, uh, community circulator, but also a first last mile option for getting onto Trimate, Tillamook Wave to get up to the coast, Yam Hill Transit to get to McMinnville, uh, or the Point also to get up to the coast. Next slide, please. Uh, as Rez mentioned, uh, we've got some exciting, uh, expansions of our service coming up, uh, later this month. Uh, in two, uh, last year, we did a community survey to help determine what those priorities were. And, and how to address them, what the funds that we received through Washington County. Uh, of our 170 respondents in, uh, Forest Grove, Hillsborough and the rural area, 35% were Grove Link writers, 53% Forest Grove residents. And the, the majority of folks listed Forest Grove as a primary or typical destination, um, that they needed to get to. We had people list out, uh, their top service priorities. And it was pretty evenly split, uh, between a number of priorities. Uh, the top one was adding Monday through Friday service in Cornelius and East Forest Grove. That is the, um, priority that we're ultimately going to be implementing. Although we will be, uh, extending service hours slightly and expanding to some other areas with our West Link service. And as you heard from, uh, the Grove Link writers this evening, there's so many other priorities that we just don't have the resources yet to address. Um, there's so much unmet need out there in the community and so much more we could be doing, uh, offering public transit services. Next slide, please. And I'll go, uh, into a little more detail on, uh, what's going to be involved in these expansions. Uh, we'll be implementing these on July 22nd, uh, of this month. And we'll be holding a, a formal kickoff event soon after in Cornelius. Uh, first with the West Link, uh, we currently, uh, provide four weekday round trips, uh, per day. We're going to be increasing, increasing that to six weekday round trips. And, and, uh, primarily focusing on the early morning, we're going to have a 5:30 AM express trip from Forest Grove to Hillsborough that will then get people from Hillsborough Transit Center to North Plans and Banks, uh, for, uh, some of those earlier 6:30 or 7:00 AM shifts, uh, that we haven't been able to meet, uh, for commuters out there. We're also going to be modifying the route, uh, extending. We're also going to be modifying the route, extending to Safeway here in Forest Grove to improve connections with other shuttle services and kind of elevating that Safeway stop to more of a hub between our different shuttles and Trimet. We're also going to be doing a reroute through Forest Grove that will increase access to the service, adding a few more stops, but also increasing visibility in downtown Forest Grove and ideally increasing the visibility of the service. Next slide, please. And then, as Reza mentioned, we will be introducing the Cornelius Link in July, which we're really excited about. We've been hearing for years that there's needed transit connections throughout Cornelius that the Trimet 57 just isn't able to meet off of the highway. We have been providing the service on Saturdays for the last three years, but we've known since then that Monday through Friday service really is a community need out there. So we will be operating at about 40-minute to hour frequency during the weekdays. We'll be providing better employment connections throughout the community than we have been on our Saturday route. We will be restructuring that Saturday loop to mimic what you see on the screen, and we'll be adding a few new stops at Forest Hills, Mobile Estates, Central Cultural, the Cinemas, Southeast Cornelius, and other destinations. Next slide, please. And finally, we have a few Grove Link service changes coming up. These will be beginning a little later in August. And we'll be putting in place a few route modifications and new stops. Some of them are pretty minor to improve the timing and efficiency of the route. Others are more significant. We'll be adding new stops at Rogers Park, Lincoln Park, Cedar and Pacific, and Burke and David Hill, places that the community is telling us need better transit access. And we'll also be sharing stops with Trimet Line 57 wherever needed it available. Next slide, please. Going to hand it back to Reza, and he'll be going over the shuttle stops enhancement project.
Thank you, John. So in conjunction with these improvements that are coming online, the county is working on a project to enhance the shuttle stop experience for customers. We want to also increase the awareness of the system to the general public. A lot of the times, the signs, either there are no signs, or there's no landing pad for people with disabilities, or other amenities for folks to be able to wait comfortably for a bus. So we received a grant, discretionary grant, through the same STIF program to do this work. And it's not just in Forest Grove. We're doing this countywide for the entire Ride Connection system. So as part of this, we're going to be procuring and installing signage, schedule information, a landing pad where needed, shelters, benches, perhaps trash cans as well if the community desires. And so the arrangement that we've been doing with other jurisdictions is that, once we install these improvements, the local jurisdictions are then responsible for what we're calling routine maintenance. And that's just to keep these assets in good working order, prevent trash buildup. If graffiti is on any of the shelters, cleaning that up, power washing. During the lifespan of these improvements, which we're calling 10 years about, and we would codify that through an intergovernmental agreement with the city. Next slide. So the issue is that when Grove Link was put in around 2015, I think, that's when these shelters were installed, and they're beyond their useful life. They require replacements. Part of the issue is that when that, when those shelters were installed as part of Grove Link, there was no agreement put in place between Ride Connection and the city on the maintenance responsibility. And that's led us into an issue today where if something comes up, there isn't a clear organization that's responsible for making those, those maintenance, meeting those maintenance needs. So what we're trying to do is replace all or most of the shelters with brand-new models. We also want to build landing pads or expand landing pads where necessary to provide that ADA access. We're going to be providing much more conspicuous signage, so folks can clearly see where the bus stops are located, as well as provide that schedule information, so folks know where the bus, when the bus is coming. And then, so once we complete these improvements, our grant expires at the end of this coming fiscal year, and that's when the project would formally end, and that 10-year lifespan, that 10-year period of maintenance would begin. Next slide. So I notice a lot to take in. This is a map of stops where we've identified improvements, needs. At a basic level, all stops would get new signs, those signs I showed on the previous slide with schedule information. We've identified a few that need landing pads. Those in the blue are the ones that require capital improvements. So whether it's a shelter replacement, whether it's a new or expanded landing pad, we've identified those, those needs. And then those in the light green are stops that would be shared with Trimet, and we're working with them on getting signage and schedule information installed. We will be sharing with them. All right, and we'll take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Council Valance.
Yes. Thank you so much for the presentation. It was so exciting to see the maps of Forest Grove and Cornelius with the, you know, that they're going to have their route too, and that is just really great. But my question is, so do you go by the high school? The Forest Grove High?
Yes.
Okay, okay. No, because we heard from someone that gave testimony that it doesn't, there is no.
As we were talking about Dilly Hill.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. So do many students use the bus?
Yeah, we found in our survey that we do annually that between 40% and 60% of our ridership is our students, either high school students, Pacific University students, or we even see some younger middle-aged students, or sorry, middle-school age students as well.
Okay, so that ridership is going really well.
Ridership is going better than it had been. And we're certainly optimistic about it. We saw the same cratering of ridership that other transit agencies did as a result of the pandemic. But we've seen it go up pretty significantly with, significantly within the past year. I think April was our first month in four years where we went above 3,000 riders in a single month. So it's grown by about 20% since this time last year, which makes us hopeful. We would like to see it grow faster. We know the need is out there. I think part of the way that we address ridership and better serving the community is through better marketing, better visibility, and these bus stops will go a long way in legitimizing, professionalizing the service, and just getting the word out to the community.
Because that was your goal when, the last time you were here. So obviously, whatever you're doing, it's working, because that's what you need, is visibility. And thank you so much for the service you do to our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Rippey.
Thank you. Thank you both for the presentation. I cannot emphasize enough how important this service is to the residents of Forest Grove. It's vital. The last mile to the public transit is important, but just the interconnectivity within the community is extremely important to students and seniors alike, to a lot of people. Thank you. I do have a couple of questions. First of all, I am a member of the TV Highway Steering Committee that's run by Metro, and I'm wondering if you are checking with them and collaborating with them with regard to the Trimet, you know, co-locating the Trimet stops? Because I noticed there was at least one stop on your map that Trimet is recommending to eliminate that would not make sense for you to co-locate there as well.
Do you recall which, sorry, do you recall which stop that is?
If you would show the map again, I could tell you, yes.
I think it's Cedar or 19th.
No, that's not it. It was over further east. If you can show the map, okay, I think it would be the Grand Lodge.
That westbound stop? They're just looking to eliminate that altogether or move it?
Yeah, because they're planning on putting that one in at Pacific and Oak, and that's just a couple hundred meters apart from each other. There's no sense in having both of them.
That's a great.
So I wouldn't, yeah. And then if you leave that map, I have a question, and again, it goes back to some of the comments made by the public earlier. But does the city, what, how is the city involved in helping determine what routes you have and where the stops are? Because I think one of the reasons for, that would lead to increased ridership are the location of the stops. And there are some areas, particularly on the west side, there are vast gaps between stops. And in a, in a conference I went to with the National League of Cities, and we talked about public transit, particularly the last mile, first mile concept, they talked about having a stop within 20-minute walk of anywhere within the city. And, you know, looking at that map, we have a heavy emphasis on the commercial corridor down below and a good spread around, but I could see that there are areas within the city that are more than a 20-minute walk. And that, that might be something, I know, I think the city should have some, could give you some input on to where we think some of those stops ought to be, or maybe the way the routers run.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Counselor, for that feedback. And we would certainly invite those conversations with the city to determine possible future bus stop locations. Many of these were determined back in 2013 after Forest Grove did the planning study and Ride Connection first received funding to operate the service. And there may need, a need to reexamine some of the unmet need out in the west area and possible future stop locations. I will add that we are a flexible service. We will do light stops anywhere along the route. We'll also deviate up to a half-mile off route. So that does open up some accessibility to the service between those huge gaps that you might see, say, between Willamina and Strasburg and 19th and B. But on the other hand, I do see the value of having actual bus stops, both for accessibility reasons, especially if someone's using a mobility device, or really just increasing that visibility of the service in a part of town that might not have that. So I would be happy to participate in a future discussion of that as we look to refine and improve the service.
Well, thank you. I think I might get ahold of you or give you my number. You have your number there, so I should be able to get ahold of you and make some recommendations.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yep, thank you very much. Again, it's a very, very much, very valuable service and vital to our community. It really is.
Yeah, I would just want to ask a couple of questions, and thank you for the presentation. So going back to the TV Highway Steering Committee, one of the things I heard while at the farmer's market was there's concern by some members of our population that when Trimet eliminates stops in Forest Grove, those are close to like senior centers and retirement homes. And so that would, you know, just like working with them to make sure that, you know, because this, this woman explained to me, like, sometimes she just, she doesn't want to plan ahead. Like, she knows she can plan ahead and call, but that you just like get an inkling for some type of food or you need something. And so just working with Metro and that steering committee would be great. And then the other thing I'd just like to say is that I, you know, really, I've been mentioning it to President Coyle, Dr. Coyle at Pacific, about telling incoming freshmen and like through that recruitment process that, about Ride Connection. Because I think that, I think it's a great service. It's a great service to literally everybody in this community, but especially for college kids who are coming, and there's like that question, like, do we need a car? Do we not need a car? I think Forest Grove is really walkable. I think to get to like a grocery store, to a restaurant, like, that's, you know, then they wouldn't have to pay for parking. It just helps everybody. So I think they started putting that in their orientation material about Ride Connection, but just also just checking in with the university. Yeah, and I think those are just my couple of comments. But again, thank you. You know, I'm going to give a shout out to the former mayor, True Axe, you know, who was instrumental in bringing Ride Connection to Forest Grove. It's just definitely been a huge blessing to our whole community, and thank you for your efforts, too.
Thank you, Mayor. We really appreciate those sentiments. Is there a contact that you might be able to provide to us at Pacific University to help start that conversation with them?
Yeah, I will send you an email following this meeting and get you that information. Perfect. Okay, great. Thank you. Are there any additional questions? I think we're good. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
Here, we're going to move on to item F, which is public hearings, ordinances, and resolutions. We have resolution number 2024-35, calling an election in the city of Forest Grove on November 5, 2024, to amend the city home rules charter. And I'm going to turn this over to our city attorney, Ashley Driscoll.
All right. Good evening, City Council. City Attorney Ashley Driscoll. I am going to go over the ordinance in front of you this evening. For those who are not familiar with this process, I'm going to give the briefest of overviews of how the city has, the path that we've taken to this point. The City Council decided to undertake a process in order to review your city charter to make sure that it continues to meet the needs of the community well into the future. And in February 2023, the council formed the Charter Review Committee. And the Charter Review Committee, starting in August of last year, met 14 times to review the charter in its entirety, some areas of interest specifically recommended from the City Council, and to compare it to the League of Oregon City's model charter to have any recommendations or amendments. The Charter Review Committee also had an opportunity to receive public comment, which it did at two publicly noticed meetings. It incorporated the public comment that it received in its recommendations to the City Council. So the Charter Review Committee provided their recommendations along with a report outlining their process and their reasoning, which was submitted to the council this spring. The council then took the recommendations from the Charter Review Committee and met and discussed them in work sessions on four different occasions. The City Council ultimately adopted some of the recommendations from the Charter Review Committee, amended and declined others. In the very highest level of detail, the amendments that are now before the City Council amend the role of the mayor, amend the city manager residency requirement, provide for procedural and efficiency amendments. For instance, how the city presents amendments to resolutions, ordinances, and orders, when the term of a counselor starts and stops, and other such procedural matters. The other, I would say, largest substantive amendment is regarding filling vacancies. One of the issues that we've discussed at length is what happens in the unfortunate instance where the number of seated counselors fall below the form requirement. The Charter Review Committee recommended, and the City Council has also recommended reducing the voting and form retire requirements only for the vote about how to fill the council seats in order to have enough counselors to be able to conduct business. The amendments also shorten the term, or potentially shorten the term, of any appointed counselor to just finishing the role of the counselor who vacated the seat. So a maximum of two years for an appointed counselor. So as many of you are aware, all amendments to the city charter must be approved by voters. So what's before you tonight is a resolution that takes a number of actions. First, it calls the election for the citizens of Forest Grove to consider the charter amendments approved by the City Council. It certifies and files the ballot title, an explanatory statement. Those are the documents that are going to appear in the voter's pamphlet. And it directs the city manager and city reporter to take all action necessary in order to ensure this matter appears on the ballot in November 2024. So if the resolution is approved tonight, that's the last action the City Council needs to take in order to refer this issue to voters. The city manager and the city reporter, along with my office, will take a couple additional steps in order to get the ballot title finalized and over to the county. If everything goes as planned, this matter will appear on the voter's pamphlet in November 2024, with any amendments to the city charter being effective thereafter. So I am available for any questions regarding the resolution in front of the council.
Ashley, I have a question. You mentioned that part of the amendment- You mentioned that part of the amendment was to limit the, the role of the council president. And I believe that last work session, we had actually changed that to, to put that in. There was a consensus to move that to council rules. If like for each council, like when a council comes on, right? You go over the council rules, you make your rules for that elected body, and it was not going to be mandated by the charter. But I just heard you say it was part of it. So I'm, I need some clarification.
Sure. So if I said limit the role of the mayor, then I misspoke. The charter amendments in front of you do amend, um, the description of the role of the mayor. So it's my understanding at the last work session, the, um, the, the City Council, uh, made some changes, but not any to the proposed language for the mayor. I'm going to get that in front of me right now, so we can.
I'm talking about the council president, not the, not the mayor.
I'm sorry, the council president. Okay, the council president, there's no changes to the council president. Only changes to the role of the mayor.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Any questions for Ms. Driscoll? Uh, Council President Rippey.
Uh, thank you, Ashley, for that, uh, review. The question I had has to do with when this takes effect. And, uh, is that, would that be after the county, uh, validates or certifies the election results?
Yes, it would be.
So if they validate that, say, for example, on the first of December, then it takes effect on the first of December?
Yes, it would. Oh, hold on. Yes, it would.
All right. Thank you.
Any further questions? Counselor Guffson.
Um, I don't, I think that, that the staff went back to kind of reword this before, but when, are we, are we going line by line? I don't want to jump ahead. We're talking about the disability, the replacing the word disability. It's been replaced with a physical or mental impairment, which I don't think is, is a good, was replace, choice of words either, should be.
I think the, the deal, and I'm, staff can correct me. I think that the issue that staff was working with is that under federal law, to be able to like have, like it had, like they were using word, like disability is used to protect the person with a disability to be fired because of their disability. Like the language is used as a federally recognized language terms in order to protect individuals. And staff can correct me if I'm mistaken, but that's my understanding of like why we couldn't just wordsmith it to whatever word we wanted, was because it was, had to be federally recognized, um, protection.
Okay, so I'll, I'll finish what I was trying to say, but, um, the word we discussed before was incapacitated. So that really says, I can't do my job. It doesn't say that I'm physically or mentally impaired, because there are many of us that are physically and mentally impaired, but we can still perform our duties. So I, it's concerning is all.
Go ahead, Ashley.
Yeah, there can be further discussion regarding what the council's intent there was. You know, when you read this provision, it's talking about when the council can step in and appoint a pro tem, um, to act in the stead of a councillor. And the idea of using the word disability is essentially saying, you know, when the council member is unable, you know, they're unable to attend meetings, then that is when this would be triggered. So you can certainly go with incapacitated. My understanding of what the council was looking for, incapacitated didn't necessarily fit. So incapacitated, you know, what exactly does that, does that mean? Um, you know, yeah, so I guess I would need to hear from the council about what exactly you would mean by incapacitated? And is that really the language that you want to say here? The intent of the provision is that if a member of the council is unable for, you know, a physical or cognitive reason to be able to attend the meetings, then that's an opportunity for the council to appoint somebody until that person has recovered. So it's not necessarily supposed to be importing, you know, the definition of disability under the ADA. It's supposed to be, you know, recognizing that there are times it happens to, in most people's lives where, you know, a physical or mental impairment or disability prevents us from being able to do our jobs. And in those occasions, it makes sense to have somebody, you know, fill in for us for a short period of time. So I'll send it back to the council. When you say incapacitated, is that the correct word? And if so, we can insert it, but I'd be interested to know, you know, exactly what we mean there.
Did you want to follow up, Counselor Guffson?
I'll just make one more comment, and then I know Counselor Ewing has a comment. But I, I just want to make sure that all elected officials are protected and are not just disregarded because they have an issue that they are dealing with. And other people in council just decide, well, you're disabled, you're mentally impaired, so we're going to have somebody else step in for you, whether you want that or not. What are the provisions? What are the, the bumpers around that to protect, um, the elected official? So this is something to think about.
Counselor Ewing.
Thanks for coming tonight, Ashley. Or actually, you're on Zoom. I'm sorry. So yes, I, I agree with what is being said by, um, Donna. I think that when you talk about physical and mental impairment, one of the key things you said, Ashley, was unable to do their job. Well, who is determining the mental capability? Who is determining the physical capability? If I am able to do my job, attend my assignments, and do those types of activity, then does it become just up to the council to make those really critical, what I consider is really critical medical, uh, decisions?
So if I could answer that, so what the provision actually says is that if, when you're not able to attend meetings. So it doesn't talk about, you know, nobody's making a decision about, you know, your physical or mental ability to do the job. It's says very specifically here, prevents a council member from attending council meetings. And if you remember, uh, if you scroll up a little bit or look further, you know, section 31, which is vacancies. So when is a council?
Ashley? Yeah, just.
Ashley just froze.
Ashley, can you rewind what you were saying? Because you were frozen for like the last 15 seconds. So you just said, go up to section 31 vacancies.
Yeah, so can you hear me now? Am I better? Okay, so this kind of pairs with section 31, which is vacancies. What, what are the occasions where the council can declare a seat vacant? And you have in here that an absence from the city for 30 days or from all council meetings within a 45-day period without council consent is a potential event where your seat can be declared vacant. So if you scroll back down, so this is filling vacancies. To me, this recognizes a situation where there's a short-term, you know, typically medical reason why a councillor cannot attend council meetings. You know, before Zoom, I think we can imagine, you know, how this could come up more frequently. But, you know, in the occasions that the person is unable to attend meetings. And again, we're not talking about making determinations about, you know, whether they're physically, mentally able to do the job. But when they're not able to attend a meeting, instead of that seat being declared vacant, there's this option to have somebody step in on a pro tem basis in order to fill their role. So I do think it's a protection for when life events come up that don't allow council members to be able to attend meetings.
Thanks, Ashley. I appreciate that. I will still contend that the word disable is, um, in our current DEI philosophy appears to be very, um, offensive. Incapacitated to do meetings. Can we make that a bit clearer in that discussion? When we're talking about incapacitated, unable to attend required meetings? Can we do that language so it's much clearer than just, um, disabled? Well.
Well, the language we have now says if a physical or mental impairment prevents a council meeting from attend, a council member from attending council meetings, or a member is absent from the city, a majority of the council member may appoint a councillor pro tem. So the current language is pretty clear that what we're talking about is when somebody's not able to attend meetings.
I just get really nervous. As a person with disabilities, I get really nervous when we call out disabilities. Used to be called handicapped. We've made a lot of changes in attitudes about people with disabilities. And I just want to make sure that we are clear in our language that we're using. That's just my main concern.
And if the council would like additional edits to that, you know, we can certainly consider them.
Counselor President Rippey.
Uh, thank you. So the idea behind the word incapacitated, because it, it simply means not in a capacity. It doesn't designate whether it's physical or mental. So I could, I could not be in a capacity to attend meetings because I have a sick parent somewhere that needs care. And for a couple of months, I've got to attend a sick parent. I'm not physically or mentally impaired, but I am not in a capacity to attend a meeting. So that's why I prefer, prefer that term, because it, it's, it actually is a bit broader and just says, I don't have the capacity to attend. Thank you.
So could I just provide a little context to that as well? I think that does expand the purpose of the charter provision. So I think, you know, again, just how the, how the charter is currently drafted is to carve out, you know, certain instances where a council member may not be able to attend. I haven't seen it used for, you know, I have to go, you know, for any reason other than a physical, mental impairment. So, you know, I think that expands a little bit how this charter provision could be used.
So are you saying that, when you say expand, is that a good or a bad thing? I'm not, I'm not, I followed you.
I just, no, I just want to be clear about, like, the potential constancy amendment. So again, how it's typically used is when somebody has a health condition that prevents them from attending city council meetings. And that is sort of an excuse, you know? That is a legitimate reason why somebody would not be able to attend city council meetings. And again, this is all, you know, generally, the city council has to work together in order to resolve these issues, but it's a little bit of an expansion. So now it's not just, you know, the councillor is, you know, has a health condition that prevents them from attending, that there could be other reasons why they are not fulfilling their role as a city councillor and the council then appoints a councillor pro tem. And if that's what the council would like to do, then, then yes, let's do that. But I just want to be clear that it is a expansion of how this charter provision is typically used.
Yeah, my feelings on it is I think, I want to protect, I mean, I have cerebral palsy, legitimately born, I'm a person with a disability. I'm not offended by it, but that's not to say other people aren't offended. But I, and I'm all about protecting people who are going through something that impairs their ability to perform the job. I don't want to expand it because being incapacitated could mean that your job is taking you someplace else. You've moved someplace else. Like, I don't want to expand that. I think if someone runs for this office and takes that responsibility, then you want someone that's here consistently, right? I know things come up and they're unplanned, and that's what this is for. But to me, there's like a balance of protecting individual rights and then just saying like, hey, well, maybe you live part of the time in a different state and you're not coming to all the work sessions, and you're not showing up for the public functions, but you're, you know, you're incapacitated right now because of this or this or this. So I am fine with the wording as it is now, uh, with impairment or disability. But that's just me. Counselor Guffson.
I'm just another comment, and it's, we may not even need line D just because it addresses not being able to attend meetings for 45 days or being in the state for 30. So that's already covered in this document. So I'm not sure why this piece is needed, but, but we also have to consider FMLA. So this, this isn't a situation where, you know, I have a, you know, a winter home that I go to, and so half the year I'm gone. It's, it's actually not being able to perform your duties. And so how, how are we talking about FMLA, too? When, when we're taking care of a sick spouse or child? Is that covered under here? It just, we have something in here about the 30 days, 45 days. So I don't even know if this is needed at all.
I'm going to respond to that part of it, and then Ashley can respond. So my understanding is if a councillor or the mayor doesn't attend a meeting for 45 days, they can be removed from their position. This section of the charter, my understanding is they have a temporary, they are impaired temporarily because of something. And so they are, but then they would get their position back. So that's what this is to protect, that if something medically happens, somehow you're disabled, you're impaired, something happens, that you're not relinquishing your elected position. If you don't show up for 45 days, then you could be removed, right? That's, that's my understanding. Ashley, you can correct me if I'm mistaken.
So it's, you're exactly right. So one provision is filling vacancies. So what, you know, what triggers potential vacancy? You know, an absence from 30 days, an absence from all meetings for 45. This provision says that under these circumstances, when somebody is physically or mentally impaired or a member is absent from the city, so we should make sure that we incorporate that one. In those circumstances, the council may appoint somebody on a temporary basis in order to fill in for that councillor. So it's giving the council the authority to appoint somebody on a short-term basis when another councillor is either completely away from the city or is physically, typically physically unable to, um, to attend council meetings.
Counselor President Rippey.
Uh, I'm o, I'm okay. I'll, I'll, uh, I'm okay with the language of physical and mental impairment. I, I'm not going to, I, I think we've talked enough about this. I think there's enough understanding within the context of those words that would allow a councillor to be temporarily absent, but then returned when, when, uh, they're able to do that again. Thank you.
Any other comments from counsel? Seeing none? Oh, Counselor Ewing.
I'm, I'm okay with the impairment, uh, language. My main concern was with the, um, disability statement. I'm okay with this. I understand, uh, what it will provide us. Uh, I would prefer a better word, but, um, I think unless Donna has something more to add, um, I can deal with this.
Ms. Driscoll.
Yes, um, one more thing I want to add before we move on. Counselor Rippey, you asked the effective day of, date of charter, and I said when the ballot measure was certified. It is actually January 1, 2025, that is in the new charter amendments.
Thank you. Okay, any further questions for city attorney or city staff? Okay, we'll now ask for a motion.
I move to, um, approve Resolution 2024-35.
I second.
I second.
Resolution Number 2024-35 was moved by Counsel Valenzuela and seconded by Counsel Martinez. We'll, we do, let's do discussion, and then we'll read it by title only. So let's open the floor for discussion. Any discussion? I'm going to say one thing about it. Uh, okay, go ahead, Counselor President Rippey.
Yeah, I, again, I want to just, uh, put kudos out to the Charter Review Committee, uh, Miss Ashley and her support and, and assistance in going through this. It's been a much-needed review. Uh, I think the recommendations reflect, uh, what it is that both the, the committee and the council were in. that both the, the committee and the council were intending. So job well done, thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I second what Counsel President Rippey said. I think the Charter Review Committee did a great job. I think that our city attorney did a great job. I am, you know, and I'm going to be completely honest because I've flip flopped. Like, I can't really decide either. I'm a little concerned about, you know, in every city survey, and when I talk to people, um, you know, people in the community, they're like, hey, we need some term limits. Some of your council doesn't show up. Like, we need to give other people accessibility. So, but I also believe that, you know, uh, we can let the voters say what they want to say and give us some direction on it. So, um, but I do really appreciate the Charter Review Committee and our city attorney, Ashley Driscoll, and city staff. I think Joyce was there every meeting as well. Any further discussion? Okay, will the city manager please read the resolution by title only?
Resolution number 2024-35, calling an election in the city of Forest Grove on November 5th, 2024 to amend the city's home rule charter.
Thank you. Will the city recorder please call, roll? Counselor President Rippey?
Yes.
Counselor Gustafson?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Marshall?
Yes.
Counselor Valenzuela?
Yes.
Counselor Ewing?
Yes.
Mayor Wenzel?
Yes. Resolution number 2024-35 has been approved by the Forest Grove City Council in a seven to zero vote. Thank you. Moving on to item G, council communication. Um, we'll do our council reports. Counselor President Rippey, you are up first.
Thank you. The only, I have no real report to do. I do have a question of staff. Tomorrow, the LLC is hosting a one hour session on the Grants Pass versus Johnson and the Supreme Court, and how that all impacts things. Uh, is anybody from staff or is the city attorney attending that so that we can be informed in the future as to how, how that impacts the policy that this council decided several months ago?
The short answer is yes.
Okay.
We will have someone in attendance.
All right, all right. It's tomorrow morning.
All right.
Thank you. That's all I have, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Gustafson?
Um, I have nothing to report, but I do have a joint water commission meeting this week, so I'll have something next time.
Do you know when the seventh generation, pardon the Public Arts Commission? When that, I've had it on my, on my notes that that was going to happen sometime this summer. I'm just trying to.
Yes, and they will notify you as soon as they have the install date and the party date, which will be sometime after the install date, just in case something funny happens.
Got it. Thank you. And next up, Counselor Marshall?
I have nothing to report at this time.
Okay. And who's up next? Counselor Martinez? The rural fire department did not have quorum, so we didn't have a meeting. Okay, thanks. And then Counselor Ewing?
So I wanted to report, excuse me, on the Forest Grove Senior Center, Community Center. Excuse me. Uh, their next meeting will be July 15th. Uh, the kitchen is out of compliance due to a non-functional hot water hand washing station. So this is limiting meals on wheels, limiting their ability to put on any type of food, type of opportunities for our community. The, when we talked, I was hoping that that would be resolved. Uh, they've been working with the contractor and trying to get this resolved. But the only thing that will be able to be provided is prepackaged foods and frozen foods that do not require actual hands-on touching of the food. There, they've decided to hold off on the first Friday dinners. They only had eight in attendance this first Friday. And unfortunately, that does not even really cover their overhead. So that will be put on hold until further notice. Uh, the car show is coming up for July 20th, and they are going to be needing volunteers. So if you guys would like an opportunity to work with them, please let the senior center know. And I'm sending a public call out for volunteers if you have time or the desire. Uh, Celebrate Forest Grove Event, formerly called the Mayor's Event, has been tabled until after the car show. CCE postponed their meeting until the 16th due to holidays and vacations and quorum. I also wanted to mention that the severe weather shelters are open. Uh, they've extended that list. It's quite a more, much more extensive list of where you can cool down. And that list can be gotten through Washington County. Okay, that's me.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Valenzuela?
Yes, I have nothing to report, meeting this week on Thursday.
Okay, thank you. And now we'll roll on over to our city manager report.
Thank you, mayor. Just a few things. Um, you may have seen staff at the first Wednesday market. We've had a couple booths there and been sharing a lot of information about 2040, police, library events, et cetera. So get a chance, please, please stop by. Uh, the Historic Landmarks Board will host a TLC event, Preservation TLC event on August 3rd. So from nine to 12 in the community auditorium right here. The Building Improvement Grant Program is now live on the website. So that was the program that was recently approved by the Urban Renewal Agency Board. So it's live, there'll be signups through the end of December this year, and then there'll be a process for going through those particular projects. Summer reading has been very successful thus far. We have two programs going on. One is for the children, but the other one is called Read for a Cause. And that's when adult readers can read. And if they, for every hundred hours that they read, their friends will donate a meal. And thus far, we've had 177 adults register, and we've had 834 children sign up as well. Library construction project is going good. So thank you to the community for pardoning our dust and the noise in the library. And then last, but certainly not least, the community engagement event at Kyle Park. It drew about 60 community members. Got a lot of really good feedback on that, and more to follow on there. And, excuse me, I forgot one thing. Chill with the Chief is going to be at Bard Park on July 24th.
On June, or July 24th?
July 24th, Chill with the Chief at Bard Park.
At what time?
Didn't have a time. I would assume it would probably be at lunch, but I'll get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Sorry, thanks.
Okay, um, I'm going to go over some meetings I have coming up in the next two weeks. And that way, if counselors want to tell me any talking points that they want me to bring up, I can do my best to facilitate that. So on Friday, I'm meeting with our community development director with the DLCD in terms of the state guidelines and things with climate friendly act that we had a work session about earlier tonight. On Monday is a busy day. WCCC is meeting, Washington County Courtney Committee. Just as an FYI, a few mayors and myself, Walton Mayor, Sherwood Mayor, North Plains and Hillsborough wrote a joint letter just basically very similar to the letter that the Washington County Commissioners wrote to ODOT, that we wrote to them just saying, hey, like, we're a team. We want to be, you know, treated with, in more than advisory and keep our partnership going in regards to MISTIP. Just really trying to make sure to elevate cities, municipality, and city concerns about MISTIP funding and the commitment for the commissioners to honor those MISTIP funds. And then at the chair and mayor meeting at 3:30, we're going to hear from people in how the Measure 110 reform, what that means, the deflection, and what that means for our local municipalities, and how that's going to be carried out. So I, I think that's of interest to this council, and I'll bring that back in August. Um, and then our MEAC meets at 6:00 PM at the library, and we'll go over, um, they are joint, going to do a voter registration drive with Pacific's leadership and student body group. Um, they had some other things they wanted to work on. And then also, for people who are part of the city club or, um, when you go to the chamber, Counsel President Rippey, they are also interested in service projects. So if there's things coming up and then how they can sign up for that, or if you guys are interested in them, we're helping with the corn roast or Oktoberfest, please let me know with that. I'm also meeting, hang on, my calendar, I have my battery saver on. So then on Tuesday, the 16th, I have a walkthrough with CWS and Congresswoman Bonamichi that I'm attending at 10:00. On the 17th, I'm meeting with, um, members of the Family Justice Center have reached out to have a meeting with me in the morning. Then on, I think I'm off for a little bit. I am not attending the Oregon Mayors Association Conference this year. It is my parents' 50th anniversary. So those are some things coming up. And just a friendly reminder that we do not have a second July meeting or a first August meeting. So we will meet again, I believe, on the 26th? Hang on, I just had my calendar open, I'll tell you. So our next council meeting is August 26th at 5:30. Okay, and with that, I will adjourn, but we do have a work session immediately following. Okay, meeting adjourned.